I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight, particularly our presenters from Haverhill Elementary tonight, so we'll get started so we can get to that. Are there any changes to the agenda as printed? Do we have a motion then on page two to approve our agenda?
President Ben Antwerd moves that. We... Agenda as printed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes and we'll go right to the superintendent's report. Johnny?
All right, thank you, President Ben Antwerd. We have our director of secondary, I'm sorry, Director of Elementary Education, Dr. Kelly Gensinius, who will kick off our superintendent report tonight.
Good evening Superintendent Edwards and members of the Board of Education. I'm excited to present to you tonight Mr. Jeremy Zantz and his team from Haverhill, his team of students here from Haverhill, who are going to report out to you about their new school tonight. So, I'm not going to take up much time. Without further ado, Mr. Zantz and his team, come on up. The floor is yours.
Good evening Superintendent Edwards, members of the board, and all of these amazing guests that came to participate with us tonight. It's an honor to be here this evening representing Haverhill Elementary School. Last year, these three students, plus another who unfortunately has moved, had the opportunity to tour our building while it was still under construction. They took detailed notes, wrote reflections, and shared what they learned with their classmates through our morning announcements and other opportunities. Tonight, I'm excited to welcome these three students back to share what they feel about our new building now. Please join me in welcoming Noel, who will go first, Owen, who will go second, Terrell, and the three outstanding Haverhill Hornets who are excited to share the reflection of our new school. After they share thoughts, I'll take a few questions from the board if you have them. Then we'll close with a short video created by Kayla Miller that features students interviewed from each grade level. It really captures the excitement, energy, and pride our students feel about their new school. We're incredibly thankful to the org, to the community, for this beautiful new space, building designed around community, collaboration, and connection. Every day we see students and staff bringing that vision to life and what it truly means to be part of the Hive. So, please join me in welcoming Noel.
Hello, members of the board and everyone here. My name is Noel and I'm in fifth grade at Haverhill. Thank you for building our new school and letting me say what it's like as a student. The first thing you notice in is space. The gym is really big. That means we can run four games without bumping into each other and classes can save the space without waiting so long. The lunchroom is a huge improvement. It's much larger, so lines move faster. It's less crowded and it feels calmer. That makes lunchtime more enjoyable and gives us more time to actually eat and talk. Around the school, there are new benches, which may sound small, but they matter. We use them to eat with friends and take quick breaks. It makes the school feel welcoming. I like having cozy places around the school to work independently. More space and better, even though the building is bigger, I learn to navigate it pretty fast. The hallways make sense, so it's easy to find classes and get where we need to be on time. We move between the different spaces a lot during the day. More space and better design help us learn. When we're not crowded or stressed, we can focus. The gym helps us be active and healthy. Lunchroom helps us feel calm and ready for the next class. Thank you to the school board, our principal and teachers, the builders, and everyone who planned this. You didn't just make a bigger building, you made a better day for students. I'm proud to go to school here. If you'd like, I can answer questions about how students are using spaces. Thank you for listening.
Hello, members of the board and guests. My name is Owen and I'm in fifth grade. Thank you for our new school and for listening to a student's view. The first thing I noticed is how put together everything looks now that it is done. The decorations in the hallways make the school feel welcoming and proud of our work. The buildings look clean and organized. That helps us focus because the spaces feel calm and ready for learning. The lunchroom is a big improvement. It's cleaner, brighter, and moves faster, so we have more time to eat and talk with friends. My favorite part is the classrooms. They're set up for learning and there's more room to move, better places to keep our materials, and it's easier to see and hear the teachers. We get to move to different spaces during the day to learn. On Fridays, we even get to go, always a fifth grade, to the treehouse for town hall meetings. When a school looks cared for, students want to take care of it too. Clean, well-decorated spaces make us feel proud and help us do our best. There's a lot of space to move around, so we can be successful. Thank you to the school board, our principal and teachers, to everyone who designed and built this school. You didn't just make it look nice, you made it work better for students. I'm excited to learn here every day. I'm happy to answer any questions about how students are using the new spaces. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Ballard Jr. The new school looks so much different now that it is fully built. To me, it looks way different than the first time we toured it. For example, we have four fifth-grade rooms instead of three, and there are multiple learning studios that help us learn on different levels and in different ways to obtain our education. My favorite part about the new school is the treehouse because it's a big shared space that is used by all the upper grade level. I especially like when the graders meet there and have our weekly overview. What surprised me most about the new school is during our first tour, it looked enormous on the inside, but now that it's complete, it doesn't look as big as I thought it would be, but it is still a really cool school. What is different about the new school that I didn't expect is a space that every grade has, which is called the commons area. This area can be used for ELA and as an independent workspace. Let's go Hornets!
Before we do the video, are there any questions for the students?
What's your favorite thing?
The treehouse.
Treehouse.
And the treehouse is what and where?
Explain that a little bit.
It's like a big upstairs space. It's a big upstairs space. It's shared by all the upper grade levels. It's real, I don't know what the other grades use it for, but we use it on Fridays to have a weekly overview, and I don't really know how to explain it.
So if you walk up the gathering stairs, it opens up to a larger space that we use for multiple different areas. We've named it the treehouse because all of our design was based around nature and seasons, so the teachers and students have named different parts of it. So, that upstairs common area that we would call it the gathering stairs, what you probably had different things referred to as in the presentations from the different companies, but we, of course, at Haverhill, we do things our own way and we named it ourselves. And so, the treehouse is that open gathering space on the second level.
Good choice.
I didn't hear anybody mention the playground. Is it okay?
The playground, what we had last, the last few years, it's definitely way bigger as wood chips. But, yeah, not really a bunch of field. There's a blacktop, and there's a lot new equipment, which makes it really nice because we've never had those, well, we've never had equipment like that. It's just been the same equipment and then moved to a different area so we could build it, and then...
So we're still missing some of our green space. So, as was presented in the last board meeting, it sounds like Central, their green space is starting to grow. Some of our green space has yet to be seeded, and so we won't have a place for soccer and football until hopefully this time next year. So, we'll see how that goes. But, that has been something that we've adjusted to, and so over the next couple of years, we'll continue to adjust to that.
I love the name "Treehouse" given how Haverhill is so nestled within the trees and how the trees are so visible from the classrooms.
Sure.
Well done, all of you.
My favorite part from the new school is the special rooms, which include library, art, music, and the gym. They're a lot bigger than the old ones, and they can have a lot more things that suit them. Like the gym now has a rock wall. Library and art room also connect, and the music room has two storage closets for storing things.
I am curious, what you do at your weekly fifth-grade overview meeting? What happens there?
What happens there is like, what we do for our weekly overview, we look at what we learned about for the whole week and what we're going to be focusing on for the week, the week coming.
We call it the town hall.
That was one of our little secrets at Haverhill, but it's out.
Sounds like it's working, though. They like it.
They do. In fact, I was at school last night, working until about 9:30, just trying to catch up, and the playground was full until dark. So, yeah, they like it, that's for sure.
I would just like to thank you, students. You did such a good job explaining how this space is making it easier and better for you to learn. That is so important, and you did such a good job explaining it. Mr. Zantz, thank you for being here. It's like a picture, is it worth a thousand words? You guys here...
Well, we welcome you all to come and visit any day during school, and you can see the real magic happen every single day. So, we welcome any of the board members to come and visit us anytime they'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks for coming back, too.
Could we have our picture taken with you guys?
For a dollar.
For a student.
I think Brad is going to be our outfit to photographer. We're going to go right across and we'll put the students up front of us, and we can just kind of do a nice middle shot. You got Sam right in the middle? Come on. Get in tight to make sure.
You guys are taller than some of us.
All right, here we go. One, two, three, and we'll do one more. One, two, three. Nice-looking group of students.
Just hold it for the parents. Parents, come on and get your good shot.
Come closer if you want.
Come on, get the shot you need. Great. Congrats.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
We have a video for the board and for the community.
My name's Reeve. I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Hattie. I am in second grade.
My name is Callie and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Lainey and I'm in first grade.
My name is Aleah and I'm in third grade.
My name is Anne and I'm in kindergarten.
What's your favorite part about your school?
That the teachers are nice.
I love the community area. This is one of my favorite parts of the school, and I love it so much because this is where we learn most of our stuff, and because the whiteboard, the whiteboard's very cool. I love it.
My favorite place is the playground.
And you like the zip line? What do you like about the zip line?
That it like goes fast.
My favorite part is the fireplace.
What do you love about it?
It's like calm and peaceful, and I can come down here and read.
And what did you think of the building when you first saw it?
I thought it was really big and it was very creative.
My favorite part outside is the merry-go-round. My favorite part inside is the smart board because you can draw and erase on it. And my other part is the cubbies because it's a cool place to store stuff.
I like the stairs because the cushions feel good and I just like the design of it.
The whole school and the community area is very futuristic, and it's very enjoyable, and I love the furniture. It's very, like, I just like love it. It's so comfy to sit on.
And you did Young Five in the old Haverhill. Now you're in the new Haverhill. What do you think of this new building?
I think it's nice.
Yeah? What's your favorite part?
Um, that there's two levels. There's an upstairs and a downstairs.
Which one is your cubby?
This one.
I like the back door.
Thanks. It has Hello Kitty on it.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you as well, students. I will say that your presentation is better than Mr. Gerbers, who's our assistant superintendent, who's not here. So, thank you for that update. Next, we have a quick little presentation around a trip to Switzerland and Italy, and that will come from Ms. Poulsen at Northern High.
Really quickly, as they're walking out, I just want to say that as a science teacher in the high school, those kiddos know how to make a claim and justify it so well, so well. Love that. Well, good evening, and thank you all for having me here today to share some details of an exciting opportunity for Portage Northern and our community. So, with EF Tours, I'm planning a trip in the summer of 2027. It's a 10-day tour to include Switzerland and Italy. I'm wildly excited, and I'm happy to share this will be my fourth world trip with students. The last have been to Costa Rica and then Iceland. Travel is one of the most powerful forms of experiential learning that we can offer our students. They step out beyond the classroom into a new country, culture, and ecosystem, and they aren't just observing, they're actually applying what they have learned in authentic global contexts. I've been fortunate enough to see students strengthen their independence and confidence and their responsibility as they, for example, figure out flight and passport protocols, money exchange rates, how to navigate shopping in stores that have crazy prices, figures that they don't even really know what they mean, and just food, like, unlike anything that we've ever had. I love seeing them experience once-in-a-lifetime adventures like witnessing a humpback whale breach the water, and there saw that, farming techniques in an environment with 24/7 sun, four to five months of the year, and 24/7 darkness the rest of the year, seeing the population efforts of little leafcutter ants. I'm kind of speaking from my previous trips. Leafcutter ants in the tropical rainforest transport, plant, and harvest their food, traipsing long paths through the dense forest, and baby strawberry dart frog tadpole on the back of its mother as she climbs her daily climb to high heights in the canopy in search of the next pool of fresh water, the eerie sound of howler monkeys in the early hours as we woke up at the base of an active but slowly releasing volcano, catching the sun scoot across the sky, seeing it straight up above your head at noon, can't find that here in Portage, but only out from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in Costa Rica, while in the same day, skyping home and having the sun still out until 10:00. The sun goes down at 6:00 p.m., but staying out here, it's just, it's mind-blowing. While in Iceland, this past summer, we saw the sun not really fully set at all. So, midnight sun, we realized how important blackout curtains really are, and the making friends, the making new friends while on the non-stop adventures with Portage students that are fellow travelers, as well as we fill the bus with other United States students and staff, teachers. And so, for this tour, for this one, I'm excited to see and learn about alpine ecosystems, art, and architecture, be able to stand my feet in a structure that's almost 2,000 years old. EF Tours jams in the experiences on their tours. And why do I pick EF Tours? I know we have, we are fortunate in Portage. Our teachers have grabbed hold of several opportunities for travel experience for kids, but I chose EF Tours mostly because that's who I started with, and have been so impressed with their tour consultants from day one, their 24-hour with us the entire trip, tour guides that they provide for us, they hire. They're very careful about selecting safe destinations to travel to. They do background checks on all traveling adults, and they select very cultural or culture typical hotel and cuisine for us to experience. So, they have 24-hour emergency service, and they seem to hire very knowledgeable tour guides. It seems like they put a lot of eggs in that basket. The tour guides that I've had, the 24/7 with us all the time, really do go the extra mile to make our experience top-notch. They are very connected, and they will push in some additional experiences. We went on a night hike, Costa Rica, both times I went as an extra, you know, like just, hey, these guides are available, who's in, and so then we go, and it's just awesome. So, as a high school teacher, I witnessed the personal and academic growth that the programs offer. They foster that. Students return more confident, curious, and globally-minded. Partnering again with EF Tours, for me, ensures a safe and meaningful and transformative experience for my students, and it represents an invaluable investment in their education and their development. Thank you again for taking the time to hear this presentation, and I'm really excited for your approval for this tour in 2027.
Well, thank you for making this opportunity available for our students. Is this the first trip to Italy and Switzerland?
This will be my first. I don't know that anybody actually has gone on this trip. They've gone Spain and France, yes. But, I actually put three options out to the student body for travel, and I picked the one that got the most interest. You know, there's a little whiteboard activity in the hallway and a little social media stuff. But, yeah, so this one actually, hands down, and I think it was the Colosseum and the Alps. It seemed like those were the ones that the kids were really wanting to experience. So, that's why this one, this one won. So, yeah, this will be the first time I'm aware of that our school has been able to offer something like this.
Very good.
And can you just off the top of your head say specifically where the places are, some of them that you'll be going? It doesn't, you don't have to tell me everyone. I'm just curious.
No, yeah. Well, Lucerne, Venice, Assisi, sorry, and Rome, and Florence. Those are our main stops. So, we'll start in Switzerland and then work our way down. Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
You said this. I didn't catch it, Danielle. How many students do you anticipate?
I didn't say that. I usually shoot for a small crew, 12 to 15. There's a lot more interest in this one than in the past, Costa Rica and Iceland's. So, I'm probably going to go with 15 to 20. We won't fill a tour bus, so what's cool is EF Tours will fill a tour bus. So, we will connect with other teachers and students from around the United States to fill that. So, I kind of like that piece of it, too. I get to connect with other teachers, and then our students get to connect with other students around the United States and their friendships. I mean, you are on a non-stop adventure, you know? Like, it's, the experiences that you have are just one after another, life, once in a life. I always feel like it's once in a lifetime. I mean, I know I've been on a lot of trips now, but it is, for them, it's like, it is incredible, and they are immediately like connected, you know? And it's fun to see that. They also like room together and just their, some of the teachers will change it up, too, in who's rooming with who every night. Some don't do that, but it really shakes it up and just, it just forges those friendships even stronger. So, it's kind of, it's fun. It's more than fun. It's why I'm doing it four times, and I'll continue until retirement. It's just awesome.
And isn't it nice when someone else tells them their bag has to be out at 6:00 a.m.?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, yes. And I don't know if I've just been super fortunate or what, but I have had the kids that, or if it's just the structure of all of it, go, 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 but they have just been really on, you know? I mean, you've got a tour bus that's going to be waiting for you if you're not on, and so, it's fun. And that's one of those responsibility things, too, because some of these kids have never really been out, you know, on their own, where they're sharing a room with, you know, someone else. So, yeah, fun. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Coming back to the podium, Dr. Kelly Gensinius to share a little bit about things we've done related to music.
Thank you Superintendent Edwards and members of the Board of Education. I am here on behalf of our district's music educators and students to express our sincere gratitude for your approval of the $369,576 purchase, dollar purchase of musical instruments that was funded through the 2019 Unallocated Contingency Bond Funds back in June. This project truly reflects a collaborative effort, K-12, and over the past year, our music educators from every school worked together to identify and prioritize their most pressing needs very carefully. Thanks to your approval, each school received the essential instruments to support student learning and growth. Your support brings us one step closer to ensuring every Portage public school student has that opportunity to experience a consistent, high-quality music education program. So, on behalf of all of us here in Portage, thank you. We're also grateful to the members of our CIA Curriculum Instruction Assessment Team and the Business Department, whose diligence and collaboration made this order possible. That was a lot of work. Your belief in the power of music education is deeply appreciated. And to close, I want to share a short video with you and a slide deck from our schools highlighting their appreciation and showing the real impact of your support. So, with that, I'll start with the video. I'm just keeping you busy with the videos.
It has been pretty exciting to feel like it's essentially Christmas every single day at the beginning of the school year. When I came in, we had a few talks about new equipment, but it was exactly just that. There were just a lot of talks, and there was a list that had come about from last year. And so, I came in, and I thought, oh, cool, like, we have a list, we have some wishes and some hopes of what we're actually going to get. Just didn't feel real until things started showing up just at the beginning of this year.
Band and orchestra are very expensive activities, and we're privileged that the district supports us. Even in my own program, almost 40% of my students are using a school-provided instrument. Some of the instruments I've been using in my own program said "Portage Township," which hasn't existed for a minute now, and so the opportunity to give them that beautiful instrument is really satisfying and rewarding. They've earned it.
It's so exciting to get what we really need to have all of these programs be successful. Our music programs here at PC are extraordinary, and the kids deserve the best because they work really, really hard. So, it's So it's exciting to get the resources that everybody, everyone needs and can use on a daily basis. The biggest things that we received are some new pianos, which are gonna be really fantastic for our program. And we also here at PC got some garment racks to help organize all of our concert attire. So dresses and tuxes that our students wear to perform in. They had been just very haphazard around our space. Now with our garment racks, we can be really organized by ensemble and alphabetized and it really just helps streamline the concert performance process, which can be really stressful. But this is a really good tool to make sure everything is as smooth as possible.
From the equity side of things too, for us, this just gives every kid the opportunity that if they want to be in band, they can. And that if they're in this program, that they will have the opportunity to succeed because the equipment won't limit their abilities to perform. It's a non-starter when it comes to a tuba. No student, unless they're super, super, super serious about it, will ever consider purchasing. To give those students a chance to play and to have high-quality equipment is huge. Allowing our students to use trombones that have the extra slide that allow them to play all the notes in between, to marimbas that all match across all of our players. So that when one student plays a note and the other student does, it's the same. When they're not in the same condition, that definitely is not true. And it can affect what they're doing. The students are really excited about it. They come in and they go straight to the kids' hands.
It's really important to me and for our students that they all have an equitable experience by opening up the case, having a shiny new instrument and having that same experience and the same opportunity to succeed as their counterpart next to them, no matter what building they're in or where they're coming from in the district.
Our students can learn to improvise on instruments. These are a really accessible way for any student of any age to be able to learn to create and improvise, which is a really important part of learning music. They play harmonies, they play melodies, they, they learn scales. And they're learning how to respect instruments as a really important tool for their learning, which I believe carries through into their middle school years, high school years and beyond, when they're gonna be learning more instruments as well.
Before, I only had ten instruments that they could use. And so they had to, ten of them would go to instruments and then whoever was left would wait on the carpet or on the risers. Now we all play at the same time. So when I say switch, they're actually switching from one row to another row to a different-sized instrument, because oftentimes the different sizes play something different. So they're getting to experience different parts rather than just one, like they had two last year. Feel like it'll give every child a chance to be more successful in their performances and because we have more, we can do more. So I'm very excited for that. It was a real point of pride for building that open house, for parents to see that Portage is investing in the music program.
I hope that this is not a once-in-a-career thing for myself, but it, it sure, to this volume, feels pretty special. We're in a really special position to be able to give that to our students, to allow them to succeed at the level that they are more than capable and, and will continue to be.
Short slide deck from the elementary music teachers. We wanted to share their gratitude as well. There's the clicker. I'll just. No. That will be helpful. There we go. So it's tiny, but they're just sort of basically saying, "Thank you for your generous decision to buy the new instruments and as act of kindness and support has brought immense joy and excitement to our program." And they undoubtedly enhance the quality of their programs, providing students with the tools they need to grow and thrive as musicians. And they're seeing this impact on their learning experiences in the sound of this, of those school performances, which if you've been to an elementary concert, is very important. Your investment is a testament to the value that you are placing on the arts importance of providing students with that well, well-rounded education. And they would like to thank you for the, believing in the power of music to motivate, inspire and educate. And that means the world to them. And you'll get a copy of this slide deck as well. Perfect, great. So here's our Twelfth Street Players there, playing on their new instruments. We've got our Amberly Tigers making some music there. We've got some Bongos. We've got Angling Road applying their knowledge. I also saw the music teacher with the gym teacher doing some fun stuff online, some collaboration with music and gym. Then we have our Central L Mustangs. You can see some pictures there in their new music room, which you'll get to hear from them here in a couple of weeks. And then we have our Haverhill Hornets here, playing their instruments, showcasing Lake Center. Again, that was Beverly Rupp, who was talking in the video. And these are her students. And then we have our Mooresbridge Eagles showcasing some of their new instruments as well. And another one popped in. And then Woodland, got some drums down there and showing off. Finally, they'd like to just thank you once again for, for the, all that you've done and really appreciative. This is a really wonderful investment in our students. So thank you so much for that. Are there any questions that we can answer for you all?
Thank you, Dr. Gensinius, for the presentation around music. And as we conclude, the superintendent report, just want to share with the board and the community that we've been trying to be a little more intentional around video usage, particularly highlighting all the wonderful things we're doing in our district. It's just another way to connect with our, our consumers as well as our parents and other stakeholders. So this information will be, if it's not already, will be on our social media pages and other feeds. Just also want to inform the board and community, tomorrow night at Central Elementary School, we'll do an informational night about the bond at six PM. All are welcome to attend. And on Wednesday, I'll be holding some listening and learn sessions for our community, parents, those who have children, those who do not. That'll be at the Portage Zane Senior Center, Wednesday at one thirty and six PM. So to give parents and community members two opportunities. And then lastly, we sent out a communication today to all of our families around free meals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. There, as we know, there was some budgetary things going on at the state level. Those things have been resolved. And so we're able to communicate that meals will remain free for all Portage students for the entire school year. And then for some parents who put money on their children's account, there's a process for them to get, be refunded, any, anything they paid for in advance. So that concludes my report today. And thanks to all of our guests as well and all the presentations.
Well, thank you for sure. What a great superintendent's report. That was fun. Okay, we'll move forward with our comments or communications section. And we have someone who wishes to speak tonight, and that would be Kat Frank. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm proud to share some incredible highlights from across our district that reflect the heart dedication and success of our students and staff. Mustang Mentors, now in its fourth year at Central Middle, led by Ann Nowar, continues to grow and thrive. What began with just twenty high school students has now grown to over ninety dedicated mentors. These students give their time twice a week to support middle schoolers, primarily in math, but also in ELA, providing both academic help and meaningful mentorship. These relationships go far beyond tutoring. They build trust, confidence and a real sense of connection across our schools. Thanks to Ann for facilitating this group. A touching moment was shared with me by Mrs. Crouch at Haverhill, working with second graders during a challenging day. She was teaching around fifty students in her learning studio because her colleagues were finishing up testing with other kids. As you can imagine, it was a little noisy and she started to get overwhelmed. One student with ASD quietly offered a small but powerful gesture of empathy, putting his arm around her shoulder and resting his head gently on hers. That small act transformed her day and when she called home to share this story with the student's mom, she was very excited too. In our high school classrooms, inclusive learning continues to shine. Katie Peanage at Northern High's Spanish I class, a student who loves music and is on the certificate of graduation track. He began dancing to a class song that was playing. He invited a peer, who happens to be a football player, to join him dancing. Even though it was just two of them dancing, the whole class was really supportive. It's a perfect example of how music and language can bring students together. At Community High School, Mrs. Ramsdale and Mrs. Kirschman have launched a new student leadership class. In September, students led school-wide efforts for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. These leaders practiced public speaking, made announcements in classrooms and inspired their peers, creating a culture of ownership and engagement beyond academics. One student leader even sent a thank you, saying that three years ago from that day was her bone marrow biopsy that showed she was in remission. And it was great for the class to recognize that month. Finally, we celebrate the Portage Northern Marching Band and the Portage Central Marching Band for outstanding early season performances. PC had a huge win at their first competition at Stevensville Lakeshore, earning first place in Class A and sweeping the captions, "Best Music, Best Marching, Best Percussion and Best Color Guard." Portage Northern delivered a strong performance at Genesee High School and were recently featured on Wood TV Eight's Morning Football Frenzy. Their next performance will be October eighteenth, hosting the Husky Marching Invitational. These stories represent just a glimpse of the positive culture connection and excellence happening across our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for being here. Our next order of business is comments by board trustees.
Kat mentioned, you mentioned what I was going to comment on, which was the marching bands. I remember competing at Genesee when I was in high school and yes, Central's band did well at Stevensville. Really proud of both bands and really excited at how well our schools represent themselves, representative at Invitationals such as that. And the Northern Invitational is going to be amazing. And the Central T, the Central Band will also be at Kentwood for an Invitational that day. So it's going to be a busy day for every band member in the district.
Thank you, Kimberly. Anyone else? I just want to remind board members that we have a retreat before our next board meeting on October twentieth. A lot of that retreat's gonna be dedicated to an update from Johnny on his ninety-day entry plan. There's some P policy governance training planned and some other items as well. If anyone has something that's pressing, please let me know. And if there's room, we'll try to get it on the agenda. Okay, with that, we'll move to our consent agenda. On page five, we have the September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five regular business meeting minutes. Are there any concerns or exceptions with the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. And we'll now move to Assurance of District Performance Monitoring Report two point one, Treatment of Consumers.
Thank you, President Van Antwerp, members of the Board of Education. You've received this in advance, but I do want to highlight a couple of things, starting on page seventeen and eighteen. Specifically, you'll see a couple of charts. One chart on page seventeen refers to our parent surveys. Last spring, parents were surveyed about the quality of what we offer here, Portage Public Schools. They're called parent satisfaction experiences. That mean score of four point eight puts Portage in the seventy to eightieth percentile on the parent survey. The next line, top box percentage, that means that forty-three percent of the parents on a five-point scale rated Portage as a five. And the next column, I'm sorry, the next row, the top two percentage means a four and five combined, combining those two categories. That means seventy-eight percent of our parents rated us either a four or a five. Then the very last row speaks to the net promoter. And this is a ten-point scale. And so basically that fifty-nine point nineteen percent means that roughly fifty-one percent of our parents rated us a nine or a ten on a ten-point scale. Moving that over to page eighteen, the students were asked about their satisfaction or engagement or experience with Portage Public Schools. Their mean score is a three point eight nine, which is in the fiftieth percentile for students. And similar for the top box percentage of thirty-three percent or thirty-three and a half percent rated their experience as five out of five. And close to seventy percent scored as a four or a five for our top two percentage. In the very last row, where you see roughly forty and a half percent, that means forty and a half percent of our students responded a nine or a ten in terms of their speaking positively about our school district. With that being said, I just wanted to highlight a couple of bright spots as a trend. Just as measured by our parent surveys, we remain consistent in our mean score, top box percentage and top two percentage. And also as measured by our parent surveys, we've had three consecutive years of increases in our net promoter score. And then finally, under seven, on that, as measured by student surveys, we've had three consecutive years of increases in our mean, top box, top two percentage and our net promoter scores. And then the last component I just want to share with the board is skipping over to page twenty-one and twenty-two. Under my report for two point one point five, under policy language, we've said that our district communications include these various mechanisms. One of the new mechanisms that we've instituted this year alone is our LinkedIn profile. And so we're looking to engage with the LinkedIn audience, which is a little different than some of our other platforms. Our LinkedIn audience is primarily what they would consider to be professionals. And our goal or our interest primarily would be for those people who are looking for jobs, either in the district or in the surrounding areas. We wanna, we wanna have a presence in that community as well. In the past, we've primarily used it exclusively for job postings only. So now we will be using it for more promotion of this district as a whole, similar to the way we use Facebook. And then on page twenty-two, just sharing in my report, under two point one point six, the note with the paragraph halfway through about emails, text message apps, push notifications. As the board heard in our last meeting, we've added a bus transportation app to improve our communication, our communication vehicles for our families. That concludes my report for Monitoring Report two point one. And I'll be happy to answer any questions of the board.
Ms. Harris, I just had a question. I think you just answered it, because one of my questions is how do we communicate these results to parents, caregivers, community members? And it looks like that we're gonna be using social media accounts of various types to let people know how we're standing on these survey results?
Yes, and at a school level, the principals get a similar report. And they also share out information with their staff and with their community or students, sharing their resorts, results with the community. And the goal is to have our schools and the school district work on their areas that they wanna grow in to, to address their, their scores or performances.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Quick question, the top scores have definitely improved. Have the parents who might rate us at the bottom also decreased?
That's a good question. I don't have that information with me at this moment. In terms of a scorn or what we report out, they kind of just report out on those top two areas. But I, I believe that our consultant KK would have that additional information.
My apologies for not asking that sooner. I did speak of it earlier.
No, it's great. It is great. What she shared with us is that those in the top two are considered satisfied and that those have remained high and significant over time. The net promoter score is the score that listed as willingness to recommend, meaning I'm willing to recommend my school district to another family or so on and so forth. The other category she's mentioned that are not promoters, she called them either passives or detractors. And our passives would be those who And our passives would be those whose scores are seven or eight, and then the detractors would be six or below. But I don't have that particular score with me for either of the two programs.
Thank you so much for your flexibility with my asking last minute. Thank you.
I had a brainstorm this afternoon as I was looking at this material, but I've got to step back. So my colleagues will remember last winter when we took Monitoring Report 1.1, and we took it through our retreats, and we had some discussions about how we should word our policy and then what our expectations should be for the district, with the goal of raising the bar. And where we landed was the concept of we want PPS's performance to be at or above three out of four districts that kind of serve a community that looks like ours. So the bar is high, like suburban communities, and we didn't want to be in the middle of the pack. We want it to be at least at the 75th percentile. So, and I'm going to give more background here. So in the back of my brain, I thought, in this year's review cycle, there was one area where I wanted to wave a little flag and ask if colleagues would consent to having that go back through retreats and having us just walk through how we define what is good and what our expectations are. It was not this. It was treatment of staff, and that's going to come in future months, and I'll make my point then. But as I was looking at this, just the same kind of logic flows. And so as I look at some of these scores, I don't know kind of how we stack up in the world of other communities like ours. And so I just, I wanted to float the idea, would we be willing at some upcoming retreats to kind of pause, you know, ask Johnny for maybe some more data, ask some more detailed questions to make sure we understand the data, and maybe tweak the wording of our policies so that we are setting the bar higher, we're stretching, but we're being fair in how we do it, and not set something that could never be achieved, but something that, you know, could be achieved if we're patient and kind of keep talking about it and keep this out there. So anyway, that's a long-winded way of, I'm just kind of planting the seed. And the timing of this, I mean, right, new superintendent, and it's kind of like, okay, getting a fresh start on a couple of these monitoring reports and just trying to figure them out and set the bar a little higher, but appropriately higher. That's my speech. You know, planting a seed and, yeah, we'll see where it goes. I think we do good in our retreats when we chew on these things. I mean, it's kind of slow and tedious, and we kind of sometimes quibble over words and, I mean, take time doing it. So oftentimes, it's punted the policy committee, and they bring something back, and we beat it up. But I was really happy where we ended up when we looked at 1.1 last year, and just going to try to encourage we do that with a few more policy areas where we have these really good measurement systems. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have one question, and I know this probably isn't the right spot for it, but it kind of goes with what you're saying, because I was curious, and I don't want to analyze the data on this, I know there's a lot, but you know, when there are items that are, that a lot of people comment on, either positively or negatively, I don't know how that shows, because we're seeing just an overall average, you know? So, you know what I mean? But, you know, I'd be curious to see how we approach those really hot topics that a lot of people are concerned about.
Yeah, and in fairness, when you're looking at the N, let's say in this case for our parents, that's roughly 1,100 or so, and obviously our students are higher. And so I think the comments are all over the place, and I have not analyzed the comments from this last particular spring cycle, and I think there's obviously a lot of people who share happiness that may not comment. There could be others who don't, who may not be as satisfied or passive, who may share the comments. So we always have to be careful with the comments, because it's not a requirement that every respondent must reply. So you kind of have to take with a little grain of salt, not to ignore it, but just understanding you're not going to get 1,100 families to write or parents to write a response, a freestanding response.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? There's a motion then to approve the monitoring report on page 13.
President Van Antwerp, I move that the Board of Education accept Monitoring Report 2.1: Treatment of Consumers as a Reasonable Interpretation and Evidence of Compliance with Policy.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and Monitoring Report 2.1 is approved, and will now move to page 26, Monitoring Report 2.8: Conflict of Interest.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, conflict of interest is related to say that the superintendent shall not conduct any Portage's business, including hiring and employment with any organization or individual, which I could benefit from direct business, financial, and the like. I just wanted to just raise one area on my report on page 29, just to share that I have been a board member with two of our local partners, and I explained this in my interview process, both the ARZU and the YMCA. Those are longstanding partners with Portage Public Schools prior to my arrival even, and I receive no compensation for my time. My time is strictly beneficial, and any of the financials related to their partnership with the district is usually handled by someone else or the business office. So I just wanted to share that with the board. You probably already know that, but I just want to share that I serve as a board member, and it's a great relationship that the board and the district and these organizations have had for a long time. I look forward to continuing those partnerships. I can't say I'm going to always be a board member there, but I did want to just lift that up so that the board is aware of my involvement as a volunteer in those two organizations.
Thank you. Any questions for Johnny? This is pretty straightforward.
My question is a comment on, thank you for your integrity, on sharing something that probably didn't have to be shared, but you just wanted to be absolutely above board. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's noted and appreciated.
Thank you. There's a motion, please, on page 26.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education accept Monitoring Report 2.8: Conflict of Interest as a Reasonable Interpretation and Evidence of Compliance with Policy.
Thank you. Mark, sir, second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Monitoring Report 2.8: Conflict of Interest, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and the monitoring report is approved. Our last item is a discussion item, MASB Delegate Assembly Handbook. Whereas in some years, there have been dozens of amended resolutions to take action on, this year there's only these three. And I remind you, these are discussed and voted on at the Delegate Assembly at the annual Fall Leadership Conference, and these resolutions affect Michigan schools, public education, and they determine how MASB proceeds with the state legislature and other groups as our chief lobbying arm. So this meeting will be a lot faster than those in previous years. You always hear a presentation from the executive director, Don Wetruba, and he'll talk about highlights of state education, MASB, during the last year, and then Jennifer Smith, the Government Relations Director, will also speak, and I suspect she'll have quite a bit to say this year about how the state budget came together, so that ought to be pretty interesting. So anyway, I hope you've had a chance to read this. Whatever you see in capital letters is what we're to vote on, and whatever you see crossed out is, will disappear, and everything in capitals would be part of the new resolution. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at these. They're pretty straightforward. And if anybody had any questions or comments? I didn't find anything controversial here. Hey, the one thing I thought was interesting is in that first resolution, Assessment and Competency Testing, the last paragraph, it says MASB opposes the use of testing as the predominant criterion for student promotion, graduation, school district accreditation, teacher-administrator evaluation, school funding, or for the determination of school district success. I did not realize that was there until this came to our attention. So I guess my intent is to vote in the affirmative for all these things. Anybody have any issue with that? Okay, well, we've reached the end of our agenda. Thank you. I need Monitoring Report approvals and self-assessments, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.